All right, we'll call a meeting in the City Council of Oregon State that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of City Council here, and if you will stand, our Police Department Honor Guard will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance and present our colors.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, they can handle it if you want to. You want to go forward, and Paul can join you.
(inaudible).
Oh, Paul's in the back.
(inaudible).
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 Every year, we select a local business that demonstrates leadership and the environmental stewardship to receive the Missouri City Golden Tree Award. In years past, recipients have received awards for corporate giving, volunteerism, and recycling and energy efficiency strategies within their business. This is the first year that we have given this award for a business that has successfully implemented tree preservation during development. For those of you that are familiar with the Oyster Creek Manor, which is off of Murphy Road, just north of Highway 6, you probably recognize that the beautiful live oak and cypress trees that have been part of our community for probably the better part of a century are still alive and very healthy because of the voluntary efforts of Oyster Creek Manor to protect them during construction. So it's with great gratitude that we present the 2013 Golden Tree Award to the Oyster Creek Manor. If we have any folks from Oyster Creek Manor, would you please come on up?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And can we get your vote, please?
Sure. Absolutely.
Don't forget to send me a space over there one day, please.
Will.
Okay, the next recipient is Tom and Regina Nichols. I had the honor of first meeting the Nichols family in 2012 when they sponsored 12 memorial trees over at McNauton Park. What started as an incredible donation to the memories of their loved ones actually evolved into the idea for the Missouri City Tree Challenge, in which the Nichols families promised to match up to 50 trees purchased by other members of the community. The Nichols family certainly followed through on their commitment, and 100 new trees were planted in the last season because of their contribution. This year, they also followed through by having a chestnut grove put at the Edible Arbor Trail as part of that donation. If that's not enough, the Nichols family recently told me that they wish to continue the tree challenge, and they've promised another $5,000 as a match to the next year's tree challenge. So if Tom and Regina, if you could come on up. (applause).
That's how Tom got so tall.
(inaudible).
All right, the last recipient is Steve Lombaro. I believe that acts of kindness and generosity are often infectious, and I think Mr. Lombaro would agree, because he generously contributed $1,000 towards the tree challenge last year. The result of that was 20 new trees planted along the community park jogging trail, which will provide beauty and shade for the users of that trail for several generations. Steve, are you here today? Steve's kind of a modest guy, so I'll hand deliver his plaque to him. All right, thank you, everyone.
(inaudible). Welcome back. We're glad you're back.
All right. I have a special little presentation. Pauline, you want to come up here? And get the Scots to come up here, will you? Come on. Is Hannah with you? Huh? Studying for finals. Oh, yeah, I know how that is.
How familiar.
Anyway, this is Pauline Engeland. She traveled to Missouri City from Hamburg, Germany last September, and as a foreign exchange student here for the first time, she had limited knowledge of the community and of the English language itself. Since then, she's exceeded and excelled in academics at Ridge Point High School and embraced her Sienna Plantation host family. And their daughter Hannah is, I think, in the same grade. So, okay. And anyway, Pauline recently earned an award for Outstanding Excellence in Debate from Ridge Point. The debate she won focused on cyberbullying, chief, if you'd like that, and whether those involved should be prosecuted. She now considers herself a true Texan. Can you say "y'all"? Y'all, I knew it. Yeah. And she's thoroughly enjoyed her experience living in our ETJ. She's scheduled to go back to Germany Thursday. Yeah. Her host family gave her a little surprise going away party last Friday night, but the city of Missouri City would like to recognize Pauline. First of all, I'm going to give you a pen. This is the official Missouri City pen that you can wear back to Germany with you. And this is just a little congratulations, says this certificate is to commend Pauline in recognition of her accomplishments throughout the 2012-13 school year at Ridge Point High School as an exchange student. So, congratulations to you. Have a safe trip home, and thank you for coming. (applause). You can come back to Texas any time you want to. Good. Congratulations. Thank you all. All right, item for public comments, this is an opportunity for anyone to address council on an agenda item that's not posted. And I have one person who would like to address us. Let me remind you that you need to limit your comments to no more than three minutes. And I also need to remind you that we can't respond to you.
Mr. Mayor, City Manager, and City Councilman, I am Bruce Leeson, age 71, living at 2815 Cypress Point Drive, Apartment 2201 Plantation of Quail Valley, Missouri City, Texas. My daughter, husband, and two children live in Sienna Plantation, and they're one of the original owners of a home there. I am president of Missouri City AARP Group, but I speak for myself this evening. I attended a public hearing and presentation at the New Tennis and Recreation Center one evening recently, presented by a contractor for the Department of Parks and Recreation. The director of the department was not there. This contractor spoke of 20 proposals, represented many relating to park areas and to be recommended for completion over a five-to-10-year period or planned projection. The presentation included mention of active and passive recreational and sports activities. I questioned that outdoor activities in the park could be most difficult for seniors during our hot spring and summer seasons, so what are passive activities? The speaker responded, focus your sitting and watching the water. I mentioned that all that you believe, I mentioned to him, is this all that you believe that seniors can do? Of course, I have mentioned before that up to 23% of our population in the city are seniors over age 55, not including families and caregivers. Now, the New Tennis and Recreation Center offers seniors a $15 monthly fee or a $180 a year package, yearly. A once-a-month bingo and breakfast, an additional $5 cost, or that's $60 yearly; two ongoing classes, including senior strength training twice a week, which is free, as well as senior aerobics three times a week at a monthly cost of $30, or an additional $360 yearly, and an occasional trip away from the facility, and that would involve some extra costs. This totals $600 for these senior activities, which includes membership within this facility. Many seniors cannot afford these kinds of costs with fixed incomes. Over 60% of all seniors depend fully on their social security, and this is a national figure, by the way, and 75% of all seniors in the USA have total assets or retirement revenue of $39,000 or less. Will the Department of Parks and Recreation require a medical insurance on each senior for fear of ill health and limitations, and of course, insurance liability on the part of the city? Will this information be considered highly confidential? Many seniors live in homes and apartments and frankly cannot afford such additional costs. I read recently that the city wants to determine what to do with the community center attached to it, City Hall, that is, across from the Missouri City Library. One recommendation is for demolishing the attached structure. The AARP Group meets there on the second Monday of each month we have our meeting. What about a center for the seniors that could make use of part of this structure? We could get programs, play cards, games, exercise, and do other activities for just the cost of the supplies, as tables and chairs, which are already there for us. We could manage ourselves, and the city would be finding a way to help the seniors enjoy their daily lives. A billiard or pool table would be appropriate, and I think needed, especially for the men. Will the city finally consider in their upcoming budget year senior-related costs and activities other than outdoor, indoor, exercising, assuming only healthy and affluent seniors exist in our city? I see the direction of our city compared to the other city nearby. Let's work with what we have and utilize for the benefit of our senior citizens at a low cost using existing facilities and resources. And incidentally, Krista Carter of the Parks and Recreation Department, I have asked her, and she's accepted my being on the Senior Planning Committee, which I will join them at the mid-June meeting. I hope to be constructive and informative and continue to assist the city in helping its senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me just mention that Wednesday night at 6:00 at the City Center, we've got a capital improvement program open house and to discuss the budgets and projects, so may want to attend that. At 6:00. All right. Item five on the agenda, staff reports. There are no staff reports. Item six is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
Move or approval?
Councilman Marshall made the motion. Councilman Emery made the second. There's no discussion. We'll vote on those in favor. Motion carried. Item seven are public hearings and related actions. 7A is zoning public hearing, 7A1.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of 30 acres of land from LC3 Retail District to MF2 Multi-Family Residential District, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City, is adopted by ordinance number 0811 on January 19, 1981, is amended, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
And this is the first of two readings, and it is a public hearing.
That is correct.
I have no one signed up to speak, so... Jennifer.
Okay, this is the tract in question. It's a 30-acre tract immediately to the west of Hightower High School, bounded by Trammell Fresno to the north of the track, Fort Ben Parkway to the west of the track, and Highway 6, as you can see in the picture, is just south of the track. The request is, the site is presently zoned LC3, which is a commercial zoning district, and the request is to rezone the subject tract to MF2, which is a multi-family district. Based on that zoning designation, it would possibly yield up to 600 apartment units based on the 30 acres that are proposed. That obviously, if this is approved, would be, you know, limited based on developable property after you take into consideration buffers and landscaping, parking, et cetera. What you have before you is a one conceptual layout for the subject multi-family development. This is another, it's at a different angle, so the Fort Ben Parkway is going to be at the top of this conceptual layout, and this includes all of the acreage that the developer presently owns. So what you see over to the left side of this conceptual plan is a conceptual layout for commercial retail development that would be adjacent to a proposed multi-family development. Again, all conceptual in design. This is also rendering, conceptual rendering, just to kind of give the council an idea of what a multi-family development could look like. The request does not include deviations, and so, as the council knows, we do have guidelines, architectural standards, for multi-family developments, and it includes exterior building finishes, and so this kind of depicts what that design could look like, but it would meet whatever our standards are. And you have P&amp;Z's final report. Are there, the developers here to answer the questions?
If gated?
It would be a restricted community.
And what is our percentage of garages per unit?
It would be the same as required, so it would be 50% of the required parking.
50% of the, okay.
And then 25% of that would have to be garages.
Jennifer, was this, was this to be placed in another lot prior to this, or was this recent?
This has been the proposal for several months.
I understand that planning and zoning has approved this proposal, correct?
Planning and zoning has submitted, has passed forward.
And how about a staff, is any staff recommendation on this? I don't see it on the package.
Staff does not include a recommendation on this. There were several questions that were still unanswered that we had.
Okay, what question was that? What question needed to be answered in order for staff to recommend? Usually, I see recommendation.
Get the motion. Is that your motion? And then we can have the discussion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a second.
All right. Councilman Smith made the motion. Councilman Marshall made the second. Okay, now we can talk.
So, I believe it was, Councilman Wynn was asking about, what were some of the questions that were still on, that staff still has some issues on? And one of them was in regard to the location of the entrance for the development in relation to the toll road. And with that, it's one to where we've been discussing with the developer about moving that entrance further north, also making sure that he got approval from the toll road authority, and that it was sealed by his engineer. The draft TIA had been approved, but we had not yet received as far as the traffic impact analysis, as sealed by his engineer at the time of bringing this to council.
But we got the letter from the toll road.
Yes, we were able to get one from the toll road authority, saying that they would be able to provide access to where that location was. We still believe, as far as staff level, that there is still a safety aspect, though, in relation to that access point. If the driveway was located further north, then, and that would be regardless of whether it was a commercial development or continued, or if council reapproved it for the rezoning for multi-family. It should be considered. We, staff still have a case, that it should be considered, the driving was further north.
All right, show us on, is that from there? Where is it now, and where would you want it to be? Clinton, why don't you come up?
Yeah, the driveway.
Is it within the multi-family?
It's, this is what's depicted here. And Scott, if you want to point out any particulars.
As Jennifer said, the existing driveways in this location here, which is almost 400 feet from the gore point where the vertical delineators stop, normally, on a roadway like this, you're looking for about 1,500 feet of weaving distance to let people move on and off of the roadway. We don't have a firm location, but further north, probably in this location, would improve the safety, in our opinion, to allow a larger weaving distance to get people on and off of the toll road.
How you going to have access to the commercial truck, if you do that?
Well, and part of what we asked for in the TIA is a consideration of this site and the location with today's condition plus the underpass condition, and that we have not received, because that's going to change the volume of traffic.
Sure.
On that.
And Scott, you also said that this was gated, right?
Yeah.
So it would be gated right at, right at the entrance?
No, the gate would have to be set far enough back to avoid stacking onto the toll road.
Can I go back to, how would you access the commercial property? You can't access it through a gated community.
That is why the city staff has asked for a comprehensive plan, that addresses both the commercial and the residential portion, and look at it together. We have not received that.
Scott, before we proceed any further, one of the things I'd like to mention is the prevailing authority over all of this is what entity?
Is the toll road authority, that is correct.
And that kind of supersedes what?
The toll road authority has the ultimate jurisdiction on this road.
And they've approved it as is?
They have approved the driveway.
As is.
In that location, but with modifications to the driveway geometrics on that.
You know, in addition to the safety issue, I mean, two areas that I'm looking at to make the decision is the economic impact of it and the quality of life. I remember I was appointed to be part of the planning, comprehensive planning committee, and we had a vision to have that land for something else, which was the highest and best use. So, is there any alternative highest and best use for that, that track, beside building an apartment that we have right now? Is any other use that you think will produce a better economic base, create a better quality of life? I know the advantage for this is that, you know, we have, we have a grocery store over there, we had a lot of retails. One of the benefits is that they will bring people over there to support the business at the grocery stores and the retail immediately, unless we have something else to compare with. I mean, do we have anything?
If I may add to Councilmember Wynn's comment, if you don't mind, is that the part that I'm interested in, you know, the track of this land, I mean, you know, with the expansion of Fort Ben Toll now, that's going towards Sienna Parkway. Eventually, I was told that the county's, again, is approved for that to connect to all the way to Sienna Ranch. So, injunction, I mean, obviously, that this may, this will not be, or this may not be a 59 and a Highway 6 corridor, but it is to one where I think, you know, having an apartment or having some type of commercial theme for Missouri City, I think this land is a great land, which would allow for people to stop and one-stop-one-shop type of deal for, and I think that will turn around and bring in, bring in more revenues than what it is. And I mean, I didn't want to take away from your point, but I was just adding to that.
The vision for the, the hope for the city is that hopefully, one day, we're going to have a town center similar to Sugar Land, because that is the final big continuous track of land. But, but, but right now, we have some developer who is ready, willing, and able to do it. So I just want to know, what are the alternative that we have, so we can make a decision?
No, I think you're right, Danny. My main concern is that, and I know the A-word is not, not a clean word in Missouri City, but we've always said that there are places where we've got to consider to have multi-family. And if you were at the infrastructure conference this past Friday, you heard that they've got, that's got to be critical to the development of any area. I'm concerned that if we don't get some people utilizing that shopping center where Kroger's is today, we're going to end up with empty boxes over there, because they're suffering today, because we just don't have the density in that area to support it. And we're going to end up with a toll road, in spite of what our friends said, that toll road, they're going to be past it, under it, whatever they want to, clear past it, aren't going to be stopping there. We've got to be looking at what's going to be in that area. We've got an opportunity here to get something done with Trammell Fresno, to get a development, to get a first-class development, that's going to hopefully bring some retail development to that corner. Guys, we have, we have a parking ride that's fixing to go in over there for 2,500 cars or whatever it is. When you look at what the medical center's fixing to do, they're going to add 10 million more square feet, they're going to add another 15,000 employees. They have an opportunity here to live in these units, get on that commuter bus, go to the medical center, and back every day, and never get out of their car, hardly except to drive to that, that center that, if we don't have density down there, we don't need a 2,500-car parking ride.
Shop right next to it.
I mean, it isn't full right now with what Kroger's offering us, and this is buffered. This is buffered by the toll road on one side, Trammell Fresno on one side, the high school on the backside, as if there was ever a place that we ever had a high quality. And Clinton, I emphasize high quality. Clinton and I were talking today, my daughter lived in Sienna in a one-bedroom apartment, ate almost $1,000 a month. She decided she wanted to go to Midtown. She's paying $1,400 a month now, and fixing to go to $1,600, so she's building a house in Rosenberg, as the demand for high-end apartments is there. Those two, I bet, well, I know Sienna's full. I don't know what the new one on Sienna Ranch is right now, but I bet it's getting full. Those people who live in both of those units, a lot of them, and they do four, six, nine, and 12-month leases there, because a lot of those people are waiting for their houses to be built, and that's what we encourage. I mean, we want people to want to be here and permanently stay here, and Lord knows, here recently, all we built is seniors' units. There are young people who we need to attract to this community, as well as seniors.
Matt, with our respect, I would like to have my question answered. I want to know what are some other, you know, ideally, we might want to see a hospital, an industrial building, a headquarters of some big companies, but do we have that alternative now? Can I put Bob Grab, who is a coordinator of the city, can you come and tell us? I mean, what do you see as coordinator? I mean, if we give up this, it would say no. I mean, how much longer are we going to wait? What is our option?
You're talking about the whole track, Danny, or you're talking about the commercial track?
No, not the particular, that, the one that, the 30 acres.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you help us with that answer, Bob?
I think one of the things that we've, we've talked about before, you know, is, is commercial land in Missouri City, and, you know, trying to protect it as much as possible. But as we have gone through the last few years, we've seen growth start to develop around that whole area, very slowly, in fact. As you know, there, the corners, we still have three corners left there at the toll road and Highway 6. As has been mentioned, high density definitely needs to be part of an area for growth. I think we may see that here on the north side at some future date, with all the activity going here into the Business Park and also in Beltway. It may not happen in Missouri City, but there's land for foundering in that area, that certainly could happen. So, I mean, I, I think any project in the future for commercial development that actually is going to expand is going to need some type of high density in the area.
Well, let me, let me just ask, add this too. I guess my question is for Ed, and part of it is for Bob. You know, Ed, when we talked about the big picture, big vision, we talked about missed opportunity on several different occasions, prior to your time being here, of opportunities of similar town center, maybe not at the same magnitude level as 59 and Highway 6, but for residents in Missouri City to come together and walk around and spend their money in our city, which is, which is here, and turn around, increase the
Clinton and I were talking today, my daughter lived in Sienna, in a one-bedroom apartment. They had almost $1,000 a month. She decided she wanted to go to Midtown. She's paying $1,400 a month now, and fixing to go to $1,600, so she's building a house in Rosenberg. As the demand for high-end apartments is there. Those two, I bet, well, I know Sienna's full. I don't know what the new one on Sienna Ranch is right now, but I bet it's getting full. Those people who live in both of those units, a lot of them, and they do four, six, nine, and 12-month leases there, because a lot of those people are waiting for their houses to be built, and that's what we encourage. I mean, we want people to wanna be here and permanently stay here, and Lord knows, here recently, all we built is seniors' units. There are young people who we need to attract to this community, as well as seniors.
Matt, with our respect, I would like to have my question answered. I want to know, what are some other, you know, ideally, we might want to see a hospital, an industrial building, a headquarters of some big companies, but do we have that alternative now? Can I put Bob Grab, who is a coordinator of the city, can you come and tell us? I mean, what do you see as coordinator? I mean, if we give up this, it would say no. I mean, how much longer are we going to wait? What is our option?
You're talking about the whole track, Danny, or you're talking about the commercial track?
Not particularly that, the one that, the 30 acres.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you help us with that answer, Bob?
I think one of the things that we've talked about before, you know, is commercial land in Missouri City, and, you know, trying to protect it as much as possible. But as we have gone through the last few years, we've seen growth start to develop around that whole area, very slowly, in fact. As you know, there are the corners, we still have three corners left there at the toll road and Highway 6. As has been mentioned, high density definitely needs to be part of an area for growth. I think we may see that here on the north side at some future date, with all the activity going here into the Business Park and also in Beltway. It may not happen in Missouri City, but there's land for foundering in that area, that certainly could happen. So, I mean, I think any project in the future for commercial development that actually is going to expand is gonna need some type of high density in the area.
Well, let me just ask, add this too. I guess my question is for Ed, and part of it is for Bob. You know, Ed, when we talked about the big picture, big vision, we talked about missed opportunity on several different occasions, prior to your time being here, of opportunities of similar town center, maybe not at the same magnitude level as 59 and Highway 6, but for residents in Missouri City to come together and walk around and spend their money in our city, which is here, and turn around, increase the growth and sales and revenues. We have Kroger. Kroger decided to come over and build. They knew the opportunity that the Fort Brantole Way was going to expand. When that does expand, which will be open in November, which gives an opportunity for more trafficking. Right now, to get to Kroger, you gotta go through Sienna Parkway, or if not, cut across and get to there. So it is in a typical position where it is. As I hear, you know, growth opportunities, I don't discredit Clinton Wong for doing this. This is a great opportunity to bring in more growth to the city. But I guess I'm interested in is, similar to what Councilmember Wynn started off saying, where are we going with this? What is our future like? Where do we see ourselves 10 years from now? When we give up these opportunities for great properties such as this, that has so much more potentials, that can have something even bigger and greater, where is the city's connection and vision, along with what Bob's doing and what folks like Clinton is doing, and to bring in all this theme together and come up with something, not just, you know, sticking up an apartment right at the corner, or anywhere that we have? I don't know if that's the big concept that we're looking at. So it may be a little awkward to speak about that right now, with Clinton being here presenting about his apartment.
Well, I think that, I think that where we are here with this, is we're using words like "great" and "great opportunities" and stuff like that, that's a spin on words. We don't have any type of data that tells us that's so great. But what I do know is that we've had surveys, several surveys, that have said that there are areas that are underserved. One of them are youngsters who are just coming in, who can, don't wanna move into a home right now, but wanna stay in this area here. That's an underserved area, and we've had, I know at least two surveys that we've done that say that, to address that. So that's one thing. So it's not that great thing we're talking about. What we're doing is, if you wanna talk about the big picture, we're addressing part of that big picture. The other thing that we should take a look at is we, most of us sit on the same council here, and we applauded when Kroger's came here. Matter of fact, we did a great deal of enticing to get Kroger's here, and we have an opportunity now to help a situation that needs to be helped, and also benefit the city of Missouri City. That's a big picture as well.
Well, you know, I just add that, you know, the town center concept, you know, is gonna require, you know, people to be able to, you know, to walk and to get to it, and to shop in the different retail outlets. And unless you, you know, unless you have, you know, people, you know, town center is never gonna kick off. And I think, to me, this is an opportunity to try to promote that activity over towards the town center so that it does have, you know, the potential to grow and to be what we think the town center should be. The other thing is, the front part of that property is, that, we're leaving that still as retail. Is that?
Yeah, the corner.
That is still commercial.
Okay, so, you know, we're not taking that whole track of land for just apartments. We're taking, you know, the backside of it, maybe it's half of it, the corner of it, but the rest of it is for retail. So, you know, we haven't lost an opportunity to bring retail into that area through this, you know, this approach.
I'm going to, if I could, I'm not going to support the zone, and I think y'all all know that, Clinton knows that, and so...
Wondering when you're gonna say something.
Well, but the point, I'm listening to all of y'all, we need to go back, because in here it says, you have to go back and you're gonna have to amend the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan tells us what was already planned to be there, okay? Town Center is Sienna, that's already on the book, they got their management structure in place, you know, and that's been planned to be done. And that's not to say that they can't have one at this location, but we're going to have to go back and amend the comprehensive plan. This question is about, is this land a good use for apartments? It's real simple. You know, I know that, and Clinton knows I'm not gonna vote for it, but I was just trying to help you, you know, whether we leave, whether we leave some retail or what have you, we have to go back to the original concept of what the comprehensive plan called for, and that we also changing it.
You know, having a town center is a dream, it's a should-be, one day we, but in reality is what we have right now, we are dealing with. People are saying like, having a bird in hand is what to bird in the bush. So my question, and I see another benefit, is that, how about a tax base? Let's say, that vacant land, if we turn that into apartment, what kind of tax base are we talking about here? In addition to this, they're bringing consumer to support the Krogers, which are the support of our city. So do we have any projections of what kind of tax base, tax revenues are we going to generate from this? Isn't that a big thing?
Let's not be, there was a vote of no, we heard you on that, we heard that.
Can we put the ortho map up?
But as it stands, we still have to consider that the comprehensive plan is a living being, that it can be changed.
Expand that, Jennifer.
Do you have that answer, Clinton? What kind of tax base, I mean, right now, we had a vacant land after you completing your apartment. What kind of protection that you have?
Let me make two points to Councilmember Wynn's question about potential tax base. Certainly, any improvement there will increase the tax base. However, I ask you to recall that this is in tax reinvestment zone number two.
Now, go back.
And because it's in reinvestment zone number two, we're not going, we're not going to see in the general fund any revenues from any development there until the reinvestment zone is dissolved or terminates.
Hold on, 10-year, 12-year?
It's another 15 to 16 years before it's over.
Yeah, but those apartments are gonna have people in them that are gonna buy things from Kroger or from the retail outlets that might be in the front part of that? So there is, you know, value to the city from a sales tax standpoint. You don't have people, you're not gonna get sales tax.
And if they go across the highway to the New Quest Center, part of our sales tax is dedicated to the incentive package that helped develop that, but indeed, whenever we generate sales that are taxable within the city, there is a benefit to the general fund from that. And if we generate increment in the reinvestment zone, it is possible that we can get the debt paid off sooner, and if we get all the debt and the reinvestment zone paid off before its termination date, we potentially could terminate the zone early and get the benefit to the general fund. I'm not saying we could do it five years early, but any year early would be a benefit to the general fund.
But we don't, we don't create any increment unless there's development.
Unless there's development.
So, I mean, I'm just making a fair statement. But to say it gets paid off sooner, it depends on what the increment is per track of land, which is only based on the value that they put on the ground.
That's correct.
That goes back to Danny's question.
That's correct.
Let me ask one more question, yeah, I'm sorry. Chief, chief, let me ask a question. One of the concerns that some folks have about apartments is the safety aspect, you know, a crime element that's brought into the neighborhood because of an apartment. If you look at the apartments that are over at Sienna, have we seen any spike in, you know, in criminal activity because we have apartments over there?
No, sir.
So, I mean, to me, I guess that, I would hope that that would help alleviate some of the concerns that people have, that, you know, when you put apartments in, you know, you're bringing a criminal element, the potential to bring a criminal element into your neighborhood. But when they're at market, when they're at market price, you know, and you're talking about renting to young professionals, and even some of us older folks that may wanna move out of our house and go into an apartment, and not a senior apartment, 'cause I'm not old enough to be senior, so.
Okay.
Super senior, I am.
But, yeah, but at least, you know, I hope to, you know, that we could answer that question, you know, upfront, that, you know, we haven't experienced any kind of uptick in, you know, in criminal activity, you know, because we've got apartments sitting over there at Sienna.
No, I can only speak to Sienna, but that hasn't been the case.
Well, that's the only one that really that we've got close in proximity to this. So, you know, I'm just trying to get that out, so maybe to alleviate some people's fears.
You know, I'd just like to point out...
I'm pretty sure you have this in your marketing plan, but what type of demographic that are you planning to market this to? I know we are so close proximity to Medical Center, Rice University, and all of the, the big employers are there. And apartment concept nowadays is different, you know, it doesn't mean, you know, you're set.
And you see where the parking lot is.
Suppose, Danny, I tried to answer your question, but let me address it on a bigger basis, like what Mr. Ellicott has said, he's looking on the big picture. I love to hear that, because you got to see the big picture, and you got to make it work to get all the maximum benefit you need for the city. Without a doubt, 14 years ago, I purchased this 56 acres. With that big picture in mind, went ahead and got its own LC3 for the best commercial use. It's a record. I did that being part of the big picture. Having held it for 14 years, we have had many retail developers look at it, come pretty close, preparing earnest money contract, some did, only to say it's a bit premature. And we understand that. After 14 years, we still see what is happening in one of the corner that's being developed by Kroger. It needs demand, and you still have three more corners left, three more. In this development business, there's a couple of schools of thoughts. There is one which says, you build a retail now, and the customers will come. I never went to that school. The school I went to, which says, you must create residential development, create the rooftops, create the traffic, and that will drive retail development. It has worked over the last 30 years, and in every last subdivision I do, I build from the back, I create the traffic, and I leave the front for retail, and that's the last thing to go, because you need the rooftops. And as the mayor said, you go ahead and build a big box, and see how fill it would be. And then these guys have come to me fairly sophisticated, 'cause, you know, we just got Kroger into another big center further north, and are having another big box, and it's all driven by demand. So having waited this long, and we see what's happening across the road, I even went so far as to see what are the remaining land left in Missouri City that can potentially do residential development, because as you said, I need the residential development to drive the commercial. And I've heard from staff that you're running short of land, which is a sad thing. But running short of land and thinking that you're going to have all commercial left, and that's going to be your reward in heaven later on, because somebody's going to come and build it, and one day, maybe they're flying to fill it up. It doesn't work that way. So in the last two, three years, we have seen, in Houston, in Texas, and in other states, because of the financial crisis, we have seen strong, strong demand for apartment rental. The mayor gave the example of our daughter, and I can give you thousands of other examples where there is strong demand for rental. And institutions are still saying that a lot of young buyers still can't qualify for houses. They got to rent. Some have now even saying maybe rental is the place, and some of us who are going into that business are saying, what else can we do? Not only make it gated, attractive, but how could entice them? That they just don't look on the apartments, the social activities. The movie theaters, maybe a restaurant in place, so it becomes like a club environment, so that you can have the full activity, a place you're willing to go home, not just to go to your apartment, to be assured, mixed with the community, and share with all the services that are available. And this is the direction that we're looking. What can we do to make it one step ahead of what is being out there? And there's another one I'm proposing, where I'm putting an enclosed lake, that you can jog around, you know, housewives with their children, you know, can go around it, stock it with fish, something that is different. So this is where I've said to myself, you know, how can we best utilize this great, beautiful track of land? So what we did, we take the less attractive northern portion against Trammell Fresno, 30 acres, and we say we're going to put apartments there, we say we're going to gate it, and we leave the prime 26 acres to the south, where we would do commercial retail. That 26 acres fully developed, you still do not have enough demand to fill it up, not even with our apartments, not even with those that is approved to the north. You're going to need more housing. And here it is, you still have three corners. The track to the west is over 100 acres. You could build two city centers if you want, you could build hotels, you could build so many things. But first, you got to build the rooftops for the young professionals, for the senior, the gentleman who's here, senior living, people are downsizing when you grow older, and you want to live in a nice environment, controlled, protective, right? So, and you have workers coming in, cities creating jobs, they want a place to stay. What are you gonna do? Just promise them that it's all going to be just retail, 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 industrial? That doesn't balance and grow the city. You have to have it where you have equal amounts of residential, create the demand, then it creates the need for the commercial. That's how I see it, you know, and I hear what you're saying, and I hear other people are saying, you build it, and the customers will come? I have never been to that school, and I don't think it will work, here or anywhere else. So, in getting off this topic, I think that having that need satisfied with housing there, it's good for the area. You're going to need more housing than what we're proposing. You need to develop the demand to drive the retail. And we're going to do our best to not only gate it, but make it enjoyable. People want to come home, they can mingle around, and they have things to do. That's going to take some planning, but, and that's what we're planning to do. Going back earlier with regards to the toll road authority. We were told from the very beginning that, and through your good engineer, that we need to do traffic impact study, and we need to work with the toll road authority to make sure that they will be satisfied with the access. And whatever they agree to, the city will conquer. We went through about four to six months of hiring our engineers to do traffic study. He must have done about three reports, and each time it is done, he has to relate this to the toll road authority, Brown and Gay, engineer. To work in conjunction is to make sure it is the acceptable access for that development. I heard early on that it would be preferable to move the entrance even further north. I don't have a problem with that, but let me tell you where I'm coming from. When the toll road authority negotiated with us to grant them the right-of-way easement, which we did without charging them any funds whatsoever, my neighbor didn't believe in that, and he charged them.
He did.
And my neighbor also wanted it to be further, to be much lower down. Toll road says, no, no, we need to move it up, because our study and the dimension says you need to be in that location. Then I said, how about Highway 6? They gave us one, which will serve both tracks of land. They went even further, not only granted us the right-of-way, they developed it, they paved it. It was totally out of my control, out of the city's control, but what they did is to work with both engineers to see how they can improve, make it wider, make it deeper, so it can... so it can serve the entire track. That is the process we went through. It's not a question that we said we want it here or there. They're the one who dictated it. We have nothing to do with it. So I just wanted to make it very clear that we went through the steps to do all of that. And today, they have worked it out and I have given the chairman signed a favorable letter. It has been delivered to Mr. Scott Elmo. He has a copy of it and I think it has been shared with everyone. That is in place. If the city wants the toll road authority to move it further north, I don't have any problem. Do it and I will comply if to say if the issue is a problem. Toll Road Authority does not think so. So, I'm not here to challenge them. I can live with if they want to move it 50, 100 feet or 200 feet further north to satisfy everybody, I'm in favor of it. But they said there's no need to do it, they want it right there. So I have to sort of comply with what they want. So I just want to make sure we clear on the issue with regards to toll road authority. It is their choosing. All I did is donate the land to them. They put some candlesticks around there. I mean, you know, I don't know why they do that, but maybe they think maybe is an early, at the beginning, it might be good to get traffic accustomed to taking that corner. So maybe that's the reason why those candlesticks are there. They are not lit at night, but they're there.
How about the concerns of the citizen surrounding that, you know, it may attract some type of people who don't care about the city, yet they just live there temporarily. They're not going to, to keep the property the way that the resident who owned the house should be doing.
You're talking about the apartments?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let me tell you, under our policy, not only are we going to be building it and conforming to the city ordinance, which is quite stiff, and if you read it, it's geared up to give the city well, good quality apartments. We're going to comply with that and we're even going to go one step further. We're building apartments, townhouses, and where we're building into our, into our deal is that we, the developer, will maintain all the landscaping, everybody's yard, and it's paid for every monthly. We want to have that control. I agree with you that, you know, there might be some tenants might be reluctant, sit back and forget one weekend to mow the lawn. We said, no, no, we will do it. Because I want to ensure that the property is well maintained. That's how I keep my value. That's how it makes everybody comfortable. You've got to do that, Danny. Don't leave it up to them.
Well, Clinton, in your particular case, unless that 28 acre becomes houses, there won't be any houses. Of all the places in Missouri City to put an apartment project, with the high school on one side, the toll road on one side, Highway 6 on the other side, and looking at, and that's why I asked you to put this picture up here. You aren't going to have residential people anywhere around that project, even if it were commercial, so. And that's the corners as Clinton's talking about. And I have a lot of knowledge about the corner above Herrera there because we were going to put a bank there one time. But yeah, there's still all those corners, there's still the peace pass, the Trammell Fresno. I mean, if you could expand that, you got all this land north of that even. Yeah. So, we still got plenty of land up and down that toll road to do what we need to do. We just...
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I'll finish when you're finished.
Well, you know, I'm glad you, you know, you showed the need to have demand. I'm hoping one day, maybe I can take Chimney Rock even further north, going up to 2234, and see if I can, which is an extension of Winfield, see if I can create more residential traffic and see if I can pull them into Missouri City to serve those corner. Because I have a stake in it, I still got 26 acres, which I'm going to need to fill up. But I can't see anything up the toll road that will bring me the demand. So I'm even reaching out. I mean, we created over 3,000 homes in Teyron and 1,000 in Winfield, and it's still not enough to support Krogers. So I know the need to have demand. And that's the kind of thinking, Mr. Ellicott, that needs to be considered when you're doing a development, you know? I'm sorry.
No, what I was going to do, I guess, to just point out is that one of the other concerns that folks have is that if you build a complex, that if you bring in a lot of young people, young children, you're going to start overloading schools. But with the demographics we have and who you're going to be marketing this to, there's going to be very few, if any, small children or school age kids that will, you know, have an impact on the local schools around there. So, you know, that, again, that sometimes is a concern of overloading schools if you start putting in, you know...
Well, Mr. Emery, these are always considerations. When you start building more residential, you do have to provide schools. And if you check the records of Fort Ben, we're probably one of the biggest provider of schools to Fort Ben. I mean, you can see what is being done in all the subdivisions. We will make sure there are schools because you need to have adequate school, not only elementary, but the middle school, even high school. So we provide sites for them. So, yes.
Yeah, but this complex wouldn't really have any, I guess I'm looking for...
No impact.
We are not, there's no really, you know, with the target market we're going to, we're not going to be, you know, adding additional, major additions to the school population at, either at Hightower or the middle schools that are around there.
What is that, what is your target? I mean, you're going to have somewhere that has no kids allowed? Because the community that you're targeting, the medical field, well...
One of the things...
Young adults.
Yeah, let me, let me say something, Don. The average lives, I mean, the growth right now in the healthcare industry is between the ages of 22 all the way to 30. That's the fastest growing industry. So when you talk about young adults, and I understand, but they have kids. And I agree that you have the high school there, they're not going to be old enough to go to the high school, but they are going to.
Some school.
Well, maybe I'm mistaken. What is your restriction?
Let me, let me say something. First of all, I guess none of you have gone to any of the meetings they've had with Fort Ben ISD about closing schools. We don't have a problem with overloading schools. That's, that statement is based on informed information. We don't have that problem. So we're going to throw this, we're going to have a discussion on something that doesn't exist.
Well, there are not that many, I can tell you, but based on, based on what was in Sienna...
About schools being overloaded.
No, 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 based on what was in Sienna, there were not that many young kids. They're young adults, yes, and some of them had children. But a lot of those people were waiting to build a house. I mean, you're going to market this to that working group of people that...
Working group and they may have children.
Yeah.
And we are not going to discriminate of having children. And all I can tell you, if they have children, we have a school just built in Winfield.
Right.
I don't, there's one, there are two in Teyron.
I don't disagree with what you're saying.
So, I mean, no, we need to have adequate school.
Right. To my colleague though, I want to make a point, Don. Councilmember Emery talked about Fort Ben ISD. I didn't talk about Fort Ben ISD. Then we got into this conversation about criteria of who's going to be in there. My question is, it's not about Fort Ben ISD or about kids, is that what is the criteria? Because I'm hearing high school kid, so I want to know, is this a restricted place?
Oh.
So this is not...
No, no, it's not.
This is not to ask about the school issues. I just want to make that clear.
Not restricted.
Right.
Not age restricted.
Not restricted against school.
There was a question, Clinton, that came up early, and I don't remember whether it was you, who asked if this was talked about as another site at one time?
I didn't ask that.
All right. You see that dark green spot right in the middle next to Vicksburg?
Yeah.
That, no, no, right there. That was originally talked about.
Next to the west.
That's what.
As a place to build apartments and townhouses and things because it's next to that treatment plant and all that other stuff. So, remember when you talked about that originally?
Well, let me, let me see if I can address that. In doing my due diligence in talking to P&amp;Z, I also reach out to staff and I also reach out to some of the council member to say, well, listen, this is what I'm planning to do. What do you think of this idea of introducing more quality apartments living here? There was no strong objections, even though I heard one of the members says, I'm not going to vote for it, but that's my policy. But what was...
You understand that, right?
Yeah.
I think I remember. So, so what, so what we did out of that discussion, we agreed that we will shift it from the west side of Vicksburg.
Yeah.
And let it go to a more, less sensitive area, to the west side next to the high school and with no residents surrounding it.
Now, I just wanted to point out to whoever asked that question, there was another site originally talked about and Clinton has moved it to a site that was more acceptable.
That's correct.
Yeah. And that's why I put that big map up there because I wanted to show that whole deal, so...
I'm a little surprised in a way because we just approved some apartments not long ago that was in a more commercial area. If you want to look at it theoretically, then this area is. And we didn't have these kind of discussions here. So, I'm trying to feel the difference here.
Okay, I have a last and I think a quick questions from staff. I think it's important. Have we given this notice to, or reach out to the citizens so that we have a chance to respond to this?
Yes.
So I'm very surprised that we don't have any objection. People come into the city or to go against that.
Nobody within 200 feet.
We have provided notices under your guidelines and served the surrounding area. We have done that and we've got zero objection.
Nevertheless, I got a few phone calls in Texas from the Lake Olympia. I want to vote for this, but I'd like to at the first reading. But if there's any more concern from the citizens, you know, there's a lot of misperception from the citizens, but we have the opportunity to sit here to be more informed. So if we have a group of citizen who want to know about more the project, I want to invite you to come and show it to them whether a home association meeting a group of citizen, if that is okay with you.
If they so request.
Unfortunately, Danny, that came...
I think that's in District B, right?
Yeah, unfortunately, that rumor came from one individual who stirred all those people up saying that this was going to be in, yeah, it was going to be in Lake Olympia and it's going to be low income housing. That was the threat he threw out to scare those people.
Can we vote, Mayor?
Yes, sir, we can. Do you call for a vote?
Yes.
Let's do it.
All right.
And can I clarify and just stand on?
I think we just called for a vote.
Well, I just want to clarify what you're voting on.
I think we just called for a vote.
Yes. We closed the deal.
Yeah. That's why you're ahead. All right. Got a motion a long time ago by Councilman Smith and a second by Marshall. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item 7B.
Thank you so much.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, continuing Article 7 of Chapter 74 of the Missouri City Code, continuing the rules and regulations pertaining to the standards of care for certain elementary age recreation programs operated by the city of Missouri City, repealing all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing per severability.
And this is the first of two reads. This takes an ordinance to do this?
It does. The state law does require both the public hearing component and an ordinance.
Move the approval.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
On this and probably most of encouraging than clarification. If you go to page four, and we talk about a, and C, it talks about program staff, except for volunteers, program staff shall be 18 years of age or older and trained as required. I recommend we move as required and says trained by the director. Then item D says volunteers shall be 16 years of age or older. My question now, which is is it 18 or is it 16?
It's 16.
Okay.
As drafted.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
That's the difference between staff and volunteer. The volunteer's going to be 16, the staff can be 18.
Correct.
Has to be 18.
Okay, if we go over to the next page, page five, it says, in an elementary age recreation program, the ratio shall be 15 participants to a staff of one person. I recommend we change that and say the ratio shall be a minimum of one staff person to That way, if you have less than 15, you still got one staff person. And then on the next page, I would recommend on section 742236B, it says coordinate an annual fire inspection performed by an appropriate fire official. And I suggest that we put in a Missouri City Fire Department. And that's it.
And in regards to the recommendation on 74231, that being the ratio shall be a minimum of 15 participants to one staff person.
Minimum of one staff person to 15 participants. That way, if you have less than 15...
Just reverse that.
And if the movement circular would accept those, I would appreciate it.
Second, I'm a little bit, I'll change this by.
I agree.
Mayor Protem, one.
Okay. Wait a minute. I had Councilman Wynn. Did you make the motion? I thought Councilman...
I reached, no.
Huh?
Yeah, I did.
You did. And you made the second. Okay. So it's, the amendments are all right with you and you?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's do it.
All right. The motion, all those in favor? Motion carries. Item A to appointments that are none, item nine are authorizations. Nine A is consider authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement between the city of Missouri City and Fort Ben County for the deployment of Fort Ben County Sheriff Office deputies from the city of Missouri City Police Mini Station.
Move approval.
Second.
Councilman Marshall made the motion. Councilman Ellencat made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Aren't you glad you came? All right. Item 10, ordinance there are none. Item 11 are resolutions. 11A is consider a resolution of the city of Missouri City authorizing mayor.
The mayor to execute and city secretary to attest a tax abatement agreement by and between the city of Missouri City, Texas and Rich Products Corporation pertaining to certain improvements to Reserve 16 and Reserve 17 in Block 3 of Lakeview Business Park located in Reinvestment Zone Number 12 in the city of Missouri City, Texas.
Move approval.
Councilman Marshall made the motion. Councilman Emery made the second. Is there discussion? Now we vote, all those in favor? Motion carries. Item 11B.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and city secretary to attest a tax abatement agreement by and between the city of Missouri City, Texas and MC RPC 2 OLC pertaining to certain improvements to Reserve 16 and Reserve 17 in Block 3 of Lakeview Business Park located in Reinvestment Zone Number 12 in the city of Missouri City, Texas.
Move approval. Second.
Councilman Marshall made the motion. Councilman Wynn made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Number 12, our announcements. No announcements really, just want to personally thank all of our teachers, our teacher staff, or all those people who have worked tirelessly this year in educating our young people and going through what they've had to go through, I think, nationwide this year. It's been a challenge for our educators and at all levels, college, elementary, high school and what it is. But just want to say personally thank you to those who serve our city and educate our people. And hopefully, chief, we have a safe summer. School's out. I know you all get busy. Hopefully, we won't have that. Our thoughts and prayers are with the four family members who were lost in the fire. One of those was very close to us in that a lot of our people knew her. She worked in Stafford. As a matter of fact, her mother was a crossguard walk at First Colony at the elementary school, so, but anyway, our prayers and thoughts are with them. And just remind everybody that what our people go through every day, they never know when they leave home, whether they're going to be back that afternoon, and, and it's just a great job our people do, both police and fire, so. We do have executive session.
Mayor, I did want to make a quick report of the last HGAC meeting, the Project Review Committee, and then the HGAC Board, has a whole approved funding for Missouri City Police Department for a crime victim liaison person as well, is, is that going to get to the other one? The mobile surveillance trailer, so you should be hearing about both of those coming through the pipe from the HGC funding.
So when are we going to get them? When do we get them? The trailers?
I don't know.
Soon as the funding gets here, huh? We hadn't ordered them already? Check's in the mail, chief.
HGAC approved these things.
Let's get the official...
I got you. You don't trust it, well, you know, what's the delivery time on these babies?
Well, let me point out, HGAC approves this stuff, and then we have to get the funding from the feds, and from the state, so...
I know.
But HGAC was the first step, so I just wanted to report on that, so...
Hopefully, it won't take that long. Are we going to do...
You want to do executive session now, or you want to go back to work session and come back to do executive session?
Huh?
You want to do...
I think while we're here, we need to go back to the...
Work session?
Budget session, and then go to close executive, so we don't have to come back out here. And a lot of these people may be here to hear what that part of it is anyway, I don't want them to have to wait.